Manhattan Neighborhood Network, in partnership with the League of Women Voters of New York, The Gotham Gazette, and the Amsterdam News, are pleased to welcome you to the Democratic candidate debate for Council District 6. The Democratic primary elections will be held on Tuesday, September 12th. The winner in the September primary will be the Democratic nominee in the November general election. With approximately 168,000 residents, City Council District 6 represents Central Park, Lincoln Square, the Upper West Side, and Clinton. Hi, I'm Dr. Christina Greer, Associate Professor of Political Science at Fordham University. For this debate, we will attempt to cover as many topics as we can, and the format of the debate is as follows. There will be no opening statements. We will have several rounds of questions with up to one-minute responses and up to 30-second rebuttals. There will be a quick-fire round, and the candidates will also have one-minute closing statements. The candidate seats were selected today by lottery. Starting from my left, we have Helen Rosenthal, Carrie Goodman, and Mel Wyomar. Welcome, candidates, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, let's jump right in. So, we'll start with you. Very briefly, what do you consider the number-one most pressing need of City Council District 6?
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
I would say about 75% of the constituents who walk into my storefront office have issues staying in their homes. They're being harassed by their landlords in one way or another, and that's why, in addition to the housing clinics we offer to full-time staff who are bilingual, it's important -- I'm very proud of the legislation that I've introduced and gotten passed to help keep people in their homes. I also have a bill that I'm very excited about called "The Office of the Tenant Advocate", which would bring tenants to the same level as landlords within the Department of Buildings. We need to do everything we can to preserve affordable housing and to build new affordable housing, which is why when I had an opportunity in a land-use
Great.
-- deal -- sorry -- to get more affordable housing for low- and middle-income families.
Great, thank you. So, affordable housing. And you, Dr. Goodman?
Well, I think the most important issue confronting our district -- actually, there are two. One is the toxic expansion plan of the Museum of Natural History. This is a plan that already has been steered almost $100 million of taxpayer funds. The money that the councilperson has allocated and appropriated is public money given to a private institution for the purpose of cutting down public parkland without listening to the public. That's the first, most important issue. And the second is the severe segregation in our public schools. Now, I'm sure we'll talk about that later, but essentially, the Upper West Side has a stain on it because it is the single-most segregated school district in the whole city, and it's one of the worst in the whole country.
Thank you. Ms. Wyomar?
Absolutely, thank you. For me, it's three things. It's our schools, our shops, and our seniors. We have an undue influence of real estate policy that -- in our community, that makes our rents soar for everyone. Seniors have no place to go when they get priced out of their homes. Stores keep going vacant because the rents are so high. And our schools are overcrowded because unregulated development continues to come into our community, and we don't get anything back out of it. And we need to have land-use reform that has -- gives us public review so that we can really defend the affordable housing in our district for our seniors and our low-income families, so that our local shops can stay in business and that our schools have enough space for every child to get the attention that they need.
Okay, thank you. So, all three of you mentioned schools as a priority. So, I'll start with you, Dr. Goodman, first, and then Mel and Helen. How do you plan to alleviate overcrowding and increase economic and racial integration in the Upper West Side elementary schools?
Well, first of all, I want to say that I think I have a unique sensitivity to this issue. I served as a public school teacher for 11 years in the South Bronx and in East Harlem, and both of my children went to the public schools in this district, and I think that sets me apart from my two opponents. I worked for two years with Deputy Chancellor -- with Deputy Mayor and then Chancellor Dennis Walcott in the late '90s -- I'm sorry, in the mid-2000s to stop the dropout crisis in New York City. And there were 20,000 kids every year that were dropping out of high school for absolutely the worst reasons. They needed one more course; they didn't know they needed another course.
So, how do you plan to alleviate it if you're elected to City Council?
And I'm going to use the same formula that I used there. I brought together the teachers' union, the principals' union, the parents' association, the clergy, all the stakeholders, the United Way, all the people that had something to say about that problem were in the room to solve it. You can't have a plan without the people who are affecting the plan working on it.
Great, thank you.
The number-one issue is school capacity. We need enough school space for every child in the district. I was the one who was able to negotiate the first new public school in the Upper West Side in 30 years. That will create a lot of space for people and room to do new things. In terms of diversifying the community, we need a district-wide plan to make sure that the schools are diversified across the board and all throughout the whole district. And I just feel like we also need to make sure that our teachers are also desegregated, and we have a diverse body of teachers and mastery around teaching so that all our students get the kind of attention they need. We also need a designated District 3 high school on the Upper West Side. It's essential so that kids have a sense of safety going all the way from pre-K through high school and get the education that will serve them in their whole life.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the truth of the matter is there is no longer an overcrowding problem on the Upper West Side. I am so proud to have supported the public school parent leaders who voted in a 9-to-1 consensus vote to both relieve the overcrowding at one school and address concentrated poverty at another school. What we've done and what I was so proud to support, trust me, after hundreds of hours of listening to the community and three years of zoning committee meetings, breakout sessions, getting into the weeds of what's going on on the Upper West Side, I was so proud to support them for the first integration plan on the Upper West Side that happened this past fall. Coming up this September, we're going to have three awesome schools that achieve the three things that I demanded for my support of the plan, which is diversity, academic excellence, and relieving overcrowding. District 6 schools are integrated now, and we don't have an overcrowding problem.
Okay. Well, we're going to shift gears just a little bit because it was brought up, and I'll start with you.
Okay.
It was brought up about the museum expansion.
Yes.
So, the American Museum of Natural History's Gilder Center expansion calls for the construction of a new museum building that would occupy a quarter acre of what is now Theodore Roosevelt Park. What is your position on this expansion?
Well, I believe the museum itself is a world-class institution that does need to stay competitive. On the other hand, it's unconscionable that we could allocate public funds to this without actually engaging the community around what that expansion will imply for the community. I was proud to also support the pushback, making smaller of that expansion so that it doesn't take as much park space, but we absolutely have to continue that push. We need to get the public involved in engaging in what that plan will look like.
Great.
Well, in -- I'm really proud of the American Museum of Natural History. I'm proud it's one of the cultural institutions that's in District 6. And as we do with all cultural institutions throughout the city, we support them, we invest in them, and here's an opportunity to expand science education and to expand opportunities for research. So, I'm so proud to have supported it and to be a part of a City Council where the Bronx delegation, the Queens delegation, this mayor, the past mayor, the borough presidents support this investment. But starting in 2015, it became clear to me that there were neighborhood concerns that had to be addressed, from dealing with traffic congestion to dealing with the parkland. And that's why I insisted on setting up working groups, which have met, come up with some suggestions. I think the community feedback that I've gotten so far is that we've addressed some of the neighborhood concerns, but really not all of them. And I'll continue to keep the museum's feet to the fire to make sure that every T is crossed and I is dotted for the neighborhood.
Great. Thank you, Carrie.
Sure. Well, I wish I could agree with the councilperson on this, but absolutely, she's misconstruing this situation. This is a toxic expansion plan that has toxic impact environmentally, cutting down trees and replacing them with a fossil-fuelled building, working to explode and dynamite and disturb a toxic waste site that's in the middle of the construction proposal, and realistically thinking of the toxic impact this has had on the neighborhood. 5,000 people have signed a petition saying they do not want this building. It's divided our neighborhood, and it's very disappointing that it took the councilperson so long to recognize that there was this vast outpouring of opposition. And I must say, it's very disappointing to hear my opponent continue -- my other opponent continue to equivocate on this. This project is costing about 1/3 of what it would take to fill the capital void on the subways. So, if we're taking subways every day and wondering why they don't have enough money, $100 million is 33% of what the new chair at the MTA has requested for capital building.
I'll give each of you 30 seconds for rebuttal. Start with you.
Well, I'm in agreement that the museum should be a leader in sustainability, and it's extraordinarily disappointing that it's not. I'm also in agreement that we need -- there will be a lot of congestion that's not addressed in the draft statement -- impact statement, and that needs to be addressed. The community has to -- every single impact that is on the community needs to be mitigated. And I'm the kind of person that works with the community and the museum to ensure that no impact goes unmitigated.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Goodman's information is 100% misleading. Yes, during construction, we'll need to have the community mitigations, the building safety that happens in all construction projects throughout the district and throughout the city. And we'll make sure that happens so that, you know, people will be safe, the people who live around there will absolutely be safe, and we'll address the traffic concerns as needed. He's misrepresenting how much of the park will be dealt with during this transition. It's a quarter of an acre; it's 2.5% of the 10-acre park. We need to look at the facts here and not misconstrue what's going on.
Okay. So, we still -- I want to get to homelessness, housing, and some infrastructure questions, if we can, before we even get to the lightning round. So, let's also be brief. Okay, I'll start back with you.
Yes.
We'll go back to housing. How would you propose we begin to serve the needs of those living in public housing in your district?
Well, the public housing has been abandoned by the federal government, and the burden of funding public housing has fallen really on the city because the state has stepped away as well. Under that burden, we've shorted NICA $17 billion. So, it's not a surprise that these buildings have fallen into disrepair. My office spends, you know, so much time trying to require, force NICA to make the repairs, the necessary repairs, to ensure that people can have a quality of life. We often ended up taking them to court. So, it's been a real disappointment from the federal government. I don't think it's going to get any better, and, you know, I think what we need to do is lean in and manage the dollars we do have a little bit better, support the staff who's there now, encouraging them to continue to take care of the residents, and I do whatever I can as a council member to enhance their funding.
Thank you. Carrie?
Well, I think there's a problem here of constantly pointing to one level of government or the other whenever we are confronting a crisis. And we have a crisis of affordable housing, and we have a crisis in the NICA project. These kinds of issues are sort of like the guys you see playing in front of the Times Square District.
The Three Card Monte.
Three Card Monte. It's the federal government that needs to provide more resources. It's also the state government, and it's also the city government. And you can see this on whether it's summer youth jobs or whether it's housing issues. This combination of resources has to be managed much better than it is. And I don't think it's helpful to have the councilperson constantly criticizing the federal officials because, after all, at some point, those are the people we need to support this. I also don't think it's helpful to have a sign on our council district door saying, "If you have bedbugs, don't come in." That sends a message about people who are living in more dire circumstances than I know I am, and I assume my opponents are, that there's a certain level of disgust with who they are and their conditions. I don't think that's right.
The people of NICA, not the buildings, the people of NICA are citizens that are firemen, teachers, city employees, and these people have no voice in our community. They've been swept aside by the federal government, but more importantly, they have been swept aside by the city government. We have countless stories of people in the NICA developments who have sewage bubbling up from their floor with no help from the councilmember. Seniors who've had no heat for days, no help, despite going to the office and asking for help, and only receiving voice messages. This is not acceptable. We have to include these voices in our public process. We have to bring attention to the problems of NICA, and we have to marshal the resources necessary to bring NICA residents to our full participation in our Upper West Side community. It's no longer acceptable to just sweep people aside. These are the voices that I care about most, and I have been focusing my attention on making sure that NICA residents have everything they need to have the voice they need in our political process and the resources they need to grow and develop as families that are fully integrated in our community.
Great. I saw you had a quick rebuttal, 30 seconds.
Thank you. I found it incredibly offensive just now when Dr. Goodman ascribed bedbugs to a certain class of people. Bedbugs affect every single building in this district, and it doesn't matter if you're rich, if you're poor, if you're middle-income. And it's a serious issue that's not to be made light of. When we've had infestations in our office, we've done -- we've fumigated, and we try to make sure that when people come into our office, they can be assured that they are not going to get bedbugs and bring it back into their home.
Did you want to say something briefly, and then I'll come back to you?
Yeah, sure. Well, I've lived in my apartment for over 40 years on West 86th Street, right around the corner from what is now Council Member Rosenthal's office, and prior to that, it was Gail Brewer's office. And I've been to Ruth Messenger's office and all the different elected officials we've had represent us there. I have never come across anything as offensive as this sign on the front door of the council office. It's supposed to be a welcoming, cheerful, embracing atmosphere. You go to the front door, there's a sign this big in bright yellow -- I don't know if Mel's seen it or not -- that says, "If you have bedbugs, stop! Don't come in." Well, I don't know who that's aimed at or why it's there, but it's certainly not the way I would conduct business out of that council office.
I'll just wrap up by saying inclusivity is the top priority for me. We have marginalized communities within the Upper West Side that have just been left out of so many conversations, and we need to make sure that these people get -- they're our neighbors, they're the founders of our community, they're the people who've lived here for generations and want to age in place without any fear of losing their homes. NICA is a part of that, but it goes beyond that. We need to create a community that is inclusive and affordable, and the only way to do that is to make sure everyone has a voice, to make sure we're willing to push up against real estate, to protect our residents, protect our seniors, protect our schools, and make sure that we have an inclusive Upper West Side.
So, that's great because we can pivot right into the widening gap between what New York City households can afford and what they are likely to find in the city's increasingly expensive and competitive rental market. So, I'll start with you, Carrie, and then we'll go over to Mel, and then Helen. So, affordable housing is rare and shrinking commodity in Manhattan. I think all the people in your district know that. Yes or no in a brief expansion? Is New York City affordable housing plan working, and what is the number-one thing? So, the one thing you would do as a City Council member to continue to expand the number of affordable units available in your district?
It's not working. There are many more housing opportunities that are declining, affordable housing that's being shrunk relative to the number that are being replaced. I think there's something like 9,000 a year units that we're losing and maybe 4,000 to 5,000 that are being replaced. The number-one thing I would do to improve affordable housing is change the formulas. I work in the South Bronx. Almost nobody in the South Bronx could afford affordable housing as it's currently defined here in Manhattan. The numbers are way too high, and they preclude the kind of inclusion that Mel mentioned just a moment ago. I think we've got to have a different dynamic where we take median incomes and analyze them by boroughs in order to gain access to that housing instead of using the metropolitan area as a source of figuring out who's eligible. That includes places like Westchester and areas in Manhattan that are very wealthy, and it makes it difficult for anybody in a low-income situation to access affordable housing.
Thank you.
The answer to your question, what's affordable? Practically nothing on the Upper West Side. We are going in the wrong direction on affordable housing. It's not about giving tax breaks to billionaires so they'll give us a few bits of affordable housing. It's about making sure our tax code is fair. It's about making sure that our land-use reform is -- retilts, rebalances the playing field so that real estate and special interests don't always have the advantage. We have as-of-right real estate, where we're adding more and more luxury apartments to the Upper West Side with no affordable housing and no public overview. We need to get rid of as-of-right and make sure that we have public overview so that we can get real affordable housing in all of the developments, not just the ones that are giant luxury developments built by billionaires. That will help us incentivize new affordable housing. And then, on the protection side, we have to close all the loopholes that will allow people to get -- allow landlords to exit the affordable housing program, including reinstituting Mitchellama programs, rent-to-own programs, and really reinvesting in public housing. All of these are ways of us making our neighborhood more affordable, but the direction we're going of these tax breaks to billionaires in exchange for affordable housing with no oversight of the rest of development in our community is really devastating the Upper West Side.
Thank you.
Well, let's again, let's start with the facts and not empty promises. So, affordable housing is absolutely a crisis. The definition of affordable generally is, do you pay more or less than 30% of your income on housing? We know that nearly half of New Yorkers are paying more than -- and nearly 50% of their income on housing. So, clearly, there is an affordable housing crisis. You know, I'm proud to have supported MIH and ZQA, which are the inclusionary housing plans that the city and the City Council negotiated with the mayor. I'm very proud to have made adjustments to that plan in order to protect the Upper West Side, for example, not letting sliver buildings go through. But let's be clear. When Gary Barnett builds at 96th and Broadway, he will have two choices. He can build as high as he's allowed to, or because of ZQA, he'll be able to build two stories more, right, 20 feet higher, and then he must include affordable housing. That's what the city's inclusionary housing plan brought, and I'm very proud to have stood with that and voted in favor of it.
All right. Well, we'll continue on zoning and development because the city's Department of Buildings put the brakes on plans for a 668-foot-tall luxury condo building in your district. One main criticism of the development plans were that the proposed height and size of the skyscraper would not fit into the architectural profile of the Upper West Side and put added strain on services. Do you support the building of these residential or commercial superstructures in your district?
Absolutely not. In fact, in 2015, I spearheaded a resolution at Community Board 7 to put a moratorium on super-tall buildings. This is a technology that is untested and that has the potential to really ravage the quality of life in our communities. The council did nothing about this resolution, and that is not okay. These buildings not only go up super-high, block out our air and space, but they don't even bring affordable housing to the district. It's all 100% luxury housing. I've been fighting this as a member of Landmark West and in my stance to reform land use for years and years. That building that you're talking about is another as-of-right building, and the only way we got the stops put on it is because we have organized the Upper West Side, organized advocates, organized historic preservation people, organized neighbors to make -- to stand against that building and show that it is not -- that the zoning of it was inappropriate. But we have to do much more. This is a policy issue, and it should have been addressed years ago, and this council did nothing.
So, again, let's stick with the facts and not empty promises. So, this particular development has been in the media since 2015, at which point my office has been working with the City Council land-use staff to see if there's any way to control the height that was proposed. What ended up happening was a local civic organization, which I help every year with discretionary funds, hired a planner who discovered that the open-space design, which looked like it was gerrymandered, indeed had flaws in it. And they filed a zoning challenge, which I was so happy as a councilmember and our borough president signed on to that zoning challenge, and that's what got the building stopped. I made it clear to the Department of Buildings by -- in letter and conversation that every I had to be dotted, every T had to be crossed, to make sure that this developer follows the rules. And in fact, that's why they've put a halt to this plan.
Thank you.
Stop -- thank you very much.
Sorry. Get going. And Carrie?
Yeah, well, I want to compliment both Councilwoman and Mel. They both were very active in developing a community response that rejected this super-tall building. Right now, it's on hold. We don't really know what the outcome of that process is, but I would say that it would be wonderful to see them both engaged as vociferously and as enthusiastically in protecting the blocking of the sun from the area around Teddy Roosevelt Park and would protect the air quality in that neighborhood. On the Upper West Side, we get a D from the American Lung Association for air quality, and of course, any and all construction involves diesel, cement trucks, and jack-hammers and the like, and there's nothing more polluting than those kinds of pieces of equipment. So, the idea that you would be against a 200-foot-high building but at the same time support three to five years of construction with equipment that's going to absolutely do the same thing to the neighborhood, I find that a little disturbing.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, but
No rebuttals on this?
We have so many -- we're over time already. And hopefully, in your other forums, voters can come and hear you all sort of talk about these issues in much more detail as well. Okay, so now we have some quick-fire questions. And so, essentially, we'll start, 1, 2, 3, and then we'll kind of rotate. If you have children, what kind of school do they attend? Lightning round.
My -- I have one child who's out of school and one child who's in college.
Our daughter went to PS 84. Our son went to PS 9. They both went to the computer school.
Yes. Both my children went to Ethical Culture Fieldston School and then went on to college. They're both -- one is out of college and one is in college. I, myself, am fully public-educated all the way through graduate school.
Great. Carrie, we'll start with you. Have you served on a community board?
Never.
22 years, twice served as chair and several committees, including chair -- currently chair for the last four years of the Budget and Strategy Committee.
Served on the community board for 17 years, elected twice as chair, started the Budget and Strategy Committee, and loved every minute of it.
Okay. Start with you, Mel. Where do you stand on regulations of Airbnb and other short-term rental sites? Should there be more regulations, fewer regulations, or stay the same?
Absolutely more regulations. I think we need to make sure that Airbnb stays in its place. It obviously has a role worldwide in terms of travel and things like that, but New Yorkers need to be -- feel that they're comfortable in their homes. We need to make sure we regulate Airbnb accordingly.
More regulation.
Yep. So, I've worked so hard on this issue, absolutely opposed to Airbnb, which allows New Yorkers to break the law, the city and the state law. Airbnb itself needs to be regulated.
Okay. More regulation?
Yeah, I think that's a class issue. I've got lots of friends who depend upon money that they take in by renting out their room through Airbnb. They've had big families, or they've had children that have matriculated. The rents have risen astronomically in their own places, and they need that extra income to make ends meet. So, regulation, yeah, that'll get worked out, but eliminating the Airbnb element in our neighborhood, I don't think it's a good idea.
Okay. Would you support -- what is your position on mayor control of schools? Is it good or bad?
I support it.
Okay, support?
I support it enthusiastically.
Okay.
I do support it. I do think there's some restructuring that we could do with the CECs to be more representative of the whole community, but I do support city control of our public schools.
Okay. Would you support a change in the way property owners buy and sell unused air rights?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think it's unconscionable that we're thinking about selling what God, what nature, Mother Nature has given to us. We've gotten way carried away with that, and I think there needs to be wholesale rethinking.
Okay.
100%. This is an essential aspect of my platform in terms of land use reform. We need to reorganize the way air rights are developed and sold and traded. It's really run amok in our city. Real estate interests have taken over our city. We need to push back and make sure that our shops are able to stay in business, our seniors are able to stay in our homes, and our schools continue to, can be big enough for a kid for each, for attention for each kid, not overcrowded.
Okay.
I'm opposed to the sale of air rights, which is why I'm so delighted that the affordable housing, the inclusionary affordable housing plan addressed this issue. It's why Gary Barnett can't build any taller than 23 stories on 96th and Broadway.
Okay. Do you support more shelters in your district, or fewer?
That's the trick question. I think the shelter system is inappropriate at large. We need to reman, reform the management of our shelter system and redesign the way it works. I think we need to work a lot harder on prevention of homelessness. We need to bring in better mental health services and support, permanent supportive housing for, first-time housing for homeless people. And then we will see what kind of shelters we need. We have a lot on the Upper West Side, and I'm, and we're very pleased and proud to have the shelters we have on the Upper West Side. So I'm for it, but not necessarily, I think we need reform of housing.
I support the shelters we have on the Upper West Side, but what we need to do is make sure the social service programs are funded adequately in order for those programs to serve the needs of the residents that they're taking care of. It's why I fought so hard over the last three years and finally had a victory in this past budget to increase the funding for all of these social service programs.
We only have one shelter in the Upper West Side, and it accommodates 54 families. So I don't think the Upper West Side is pulling its fair share on that issue. And I would say this, the number-one driver of homelessness is domestic violence. And I have a lot of experience working with the NYPD and the Commissioner on Domestic Violence. We actually got Yankee Stadium to light itself up purple for Domestic Violence Day. And I haven't heard any of the other candidates in this race mention the actual root cause for, I think it's something on the order of 27 or 30% of homelessness caused by domestic violence.
Okay, last quick-fire question. I'll start with you. Voters will be asked to vote on the proposition of holding a constitutional convention in the November election. This question is on the ballot every 20 years. Will you vote for holding a constitutional convention?
Yes, I think it's absolutely essential. We live in a city where it's ruled by one party, the Democratic Party, their done-deal dem, it's like the South used to be, Dixiecrats. The party supports each other by giving each other fundraisers, endorsing each other, and I think we need a constitutional convention in order to reset the gyroscope of relationship between communities and the political parties that are supposed to represent them.
Okay. Yes or no, constitutional convention?
Dr. Greer, I feel that we, I would normally say absolutely we need a constitutional convention, but right now, I would vote against it, because the gerrymandered districts for the Senate, State Senate, which is how we select delegates to the convention, would be skewed toward a conservative angle. And I really feel that we need to elect more state senators that will balance that out, and then we can have a constitutional convention. There's nothing that prevents us to amend the constitution by vote within the state legislature. So we could put it off a while and not put many protections at risk by opening up the whole can of worms right now.
Okay.
You know, I share Labor's concerns about a constitutional event, convention. You know, we're in a point in time federally and at our state where we don't want to put our pensions at risk. You know, we don't want to bring in any opportunity for right-to-work laws.
So is that a no?
I don't.
Okay.
But what I would do is, just like I did with the speakers' forums last time around, I would like to have educational forums so that New Yorkers know what they're voting on.
Great. Thank you all so much. We're going to move into closing statements. We're going to start with you. And if elected, as you sort of think about your closing statements, what plans would you have to improve the quality of life for the people of your district in District 6?
Thank you so much. My name is Mel Wymore. I'm running for New York City Council because I love the Upper West Side. I've been here for 30 years, raised two children here, and served on the community board for 22 years, twice elected its chair. I focus, and this is a big issue in this debate, on tangible results. During my tenure on the community board, I have negotiated the first new public school in our district, 600 units of permanent affordable housing, $20 million for Riverside Park South, and also added, rehabilitated two new community centers that serve youth and seniors. What the trends we're seeing in the recent years have been disturbing to me. We've seen empty storefronts plaguing every avenue on our district. We're hearing about seniors afraid of losing their homes from the high rents that they see, and we are seeing our schools continue to be overcrowded. I will stand for against real estate interests in our community, reform land use policies to make sure every person in our community is heard and served 100% of the time, and that's an inclusive stance so that the Upper West Side is 100% sustainable.
Great.
I'm asking for your vote on September 12th. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, like Mel, I've lived most of my adult life on the Upper West Side. I like to refer to it as the upper-best side. In a recent survey, I think over 90% of the people who live in our neighborhood say that they don't want to move and they consider it one of the best neighborhoods, if not the best neighborhood in the city. But there are some stains on it, and there are some things that require attention. And the two that I find to be most egregious, the just two most disturbing elements, have to do with this toxic expansion plan by the museum, which is absorbing so much capital money that if you were to take the, it's going to be roughly $300 million that ultimately will go to the museum from our public coffers. If you take that money and think about all the things that Mel is concerned about and all the issues that the councilwoman would like to see addressed, that money could be effectively utilized. So I'd like to see the quality of life improved by stopping that plan. I wish we could get an agreement on that. It'd be the first big step for our district in quite a while. And I also think those subways need severe attention. That can only come with a kind of a consensus that we're not going to point fingers, we're not going to blame, we're going to work together. And I'm happy to do that.
Great, thank you.
Well, Dr. Greer, Eminem, and to our viewers, thank you so much for taking the time to listen to this debate and help us think through these issues. You know, I, I'm so proud to have supported the first public school integration plan on the Upper West Side in 50 years, and I'm so proud to have the support of such diverse groups in this, in the city. I've been endorsed by Stonewall Democrats, the Sierra Club, Labor, Planned Parenthood, Tenants PAC, and so many others, as well as Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer. Look, there's a lot to be done still on the Upper West Side, and I'm going to continue to listen to everyone, to bring people together, to dig down into the weeds and the details, and to follow my moral compass when that needs to be done. I appreciated your support in 2013, and I hope you're, I can have your vote to continue doing the kinds of things that we've been doing over the last four years. Thank you.
Great. Well, I want to thank all the candidates for participating in today's debate. The primary election for the 6th District City Council seat will be held Tuesday, September 12th. For more information about voting, locating your poll site, and the candidates, you can visit League of Women Voters website, lwnyc.org. Remember, only registered voters who are enrolled in the Democratic Party can vote in the primary. Thank you for watching. Manhattan Neighborhood Network, and goodbye.